Well, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Roxbury and Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. Today is Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. Where did September go? Flew by me. So seat the members. We have, go ahead, Sierra, you start.
The Airburg Leon is present.
Rob Horgan. John Smolaga.
Oh, great. Sue's here. Okay. And I'm Russ Drenzo, and I chair the commission. So we do have a quorum, and it's all the permanent members. So compute communication with the public. Do we have any of that? Anybody from the public who hopefully could get in? No? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like Kathy is on two. I'm sorry.
I just let Kathy in.
Okay, yeah.
And I just let four more people in. So you're up to 20 now.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Russ.
So we do have a full quorum. All the permanent members are here, Kathy, but of course, you're, if you do contribute as much as you want until a motion is called. Okay? So approval of the minutes of the public hearing, August 23rd, 2022. Do I have, anybody have any issues with the minutes from the public hearing?
No. Good to me.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 23rd, 2022. Anybody have any issues with the minutes? Changes?
Nope.
No, no.
Look for, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Having hearing on, all in favor? Aye.
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 Get it on, old business. It says NOV, but it should also be a cease and desist order. I need to, I need the help of the commission on this one because it's, it's ready for a TV movie, actually. So today, we received a letter from Neil Marcus, who's an attorney in Danbury, who I know very well. Go way back when Neil, he's a good man. The letter says that he represents this Miss Grebilla, and he hasn't had time to review the file because he just got hired. And he's asking for another month for him to get up to date on the application and what's going on. There is no application, but he also stated in his letter that she used the residential exemption. There's an exemption for residential use, but I believe if Mr. Marcus reads the file, he'll see that that exemption doesn't apply to what's happened. She, she's the master here. I mean, this is very interesting. She was told after she cut three trees that she needed a permit. She ignored that, and she proceeded to clear cut all around an intermittent stream. We issued a notice of violation. She did not appear at the notice of violation hearing. So we had no choice but to issue a cease and desist order. Cease and desist orders become very legal. They're very serious, and it's the tool in the wetlands box to get somebody to respond. It allows them their right to come to a meeting and present this case, which she did. And she said that it is not a wetland, and she said she had trouble understanding English, and that's why she didn't really understand what was going on. And she did have a friend who helped her through the process. At that meeting, we did ask her to provide us with the soil scientist report. If she didn't believe it was a wetland, she needs to prove it, not the commission, and also to provide us the name of the contractor. So we could educate the contractor that he should have gotten permits before he cut trees in a wetland area, a regulated area. And I don't know if I have my story straight, but we'll get it straight. I don't know if she didn't, she came to the NOV. I don't think she did, but she did attend one meeting where we requested more information. At the next meeting, she said she's not coming to the meeting because a week before she asked for a Freedom of Information Act for a bunch of material, which she already had. But she has the right to ask for it officially. And John Cody did get it together. He did respond within four days, which the law requires. And he did give her everything. And during our research, we found a survey map of the adjoining property showing the intermittent stream on her property as an intermittent stream. Now, I know it's an intermittent stream. John Cody knows because we're qualified, and anybody from the commission who looked could clearly see it's a regulated area. We're trying very hard to cooperate with her because I don't think she, maybe she does know the seriousness and doesn't care. I'm not sure. But we are ready to go to court, and if you go to court, the court assesses the fine. It could be $1,000 a day for the violation. So it isn't us. It isn't the commission that assesses the fine. It's up to the court, and the court just looks at the record. The record here will show that she's totally disregarded the commission's request, could have solved this by submitting an application with a $350 after, after the fact fee, but chose this path that she's on. So she has the right to hire an attorney, which she did, and that's good for her. So at this meeting, we did send her a letter last week. Our attorneys sent her a letter saying, you really need to come to this meeting, and we really need to work this out. It's not, it's not a this is something that should have been worked out months ago, but it's not the commission's fault. So a couple of days before this meeting, she decides to hire an attorney, who obviously needs to have time to read the file and get up to date. Gail asked me if I would be willing to have a meeting with her and her attorney and John Cody. She feels if her attorney has all the information, hopefully he'll guide her in the right direction, but maybe he'll guard her into this as a residential use exemption, which it is not. I've been doing this 30 years. I've worked with attorney, land use attorneys for, in all that time, this is, if you look at the legislative history, the reason for the exemption is so people didn't need to get permits to mow their lawns, to plant a couple azaleas, to put a little, you know, swing set for your kids. It's that kind of exemption. What she did, and we have the evidence, is she, after she was told to stop, she proceeded to clear cut. And what she did meets the definition of clear cut in our regulations, which needs a permit, even if you're not in a wetland area because it could change drainage. In the process of clear cutting and running all that equipment, she's, she's compromised the stream. The path of the stream has been run over. I'm not sure when we get a serious storm, if it's going to flood and go in the, and to the neighbor's yard, which will be a civil matter that she'll have to deal with. And also by cutting all these trees, which she claimed was a cleanup from a storm event. However, we have pictures showing brand new, live trees with sap coming out of them. So clearly, she did not cut down trees from a storm event. She just recklessly, with no regard for the environment, clear cut this area, which will now increase the water temperature of that intermittent stream, which, which is critical to the ecosystem of that area. So she decided to hire an attorney days before. And so it is now up to the commission whether we want to give her another month so her attorney could hear us, whether we decide and vote tonight to go right to court. If we go to court, it's going to be costly for all parties, including the town of Roxbury. However, the town of Roxbury will want, will ask the judge for her to pay all our legal fees. The courts kind of look at this as the seriousness of the violation. And if the, if the person who's being, we're asking to find, if they tried to cooperate in any way. And I think the record will show we've been nothing but bending over for her. She did come down to the town hall, did receive all the information, which included the map, a surveyed map that shows an intermittent stream on her property where she clear cut at least 20 to 30 trees. It's unfortunate because nobody in this town likes to go to war or go to court, is a better word, with, with a neighbor, because we're all neighbors. But I feel this commission has really tried hard to get her, it could have been simple for her, but she, she first did the Freedom of Information Act thing, which said, I'm not coming to a meeting till I get that information. And then she gets the information and hires a lawyer days before. The court is going to see all this, so I'm not too worried about it. What I'm asking the commission is what's our next step? Do we want to vote to go directly to court and have the court assess a fine? Do we want to take Gail's advice and allow the attorney to either A, sit down with myself, Gail, John Cody, Miss Grebilla before the next meeting? So at the next meeting, hopefully we could have a you know, get this thing over with because it's wasting a lot of volunteers' time. It's wasting a lot of town money. And I don't understand the ploy here, but I have to respect it. It's her right. The other option we could have is the commission decides that, no, we don't want you to sit down with Gail and her. Let her, let her attorney come to the next meeting and let her, let him talk to the commission because it's the commission's, it's our job. I hate when lawyers come in and they think it's their job. It's not their job to make this decision. It's our job. It's our job to sit down as a commission in front of the public and hash this out, listen to the attorney, listen to his legal opinion, and unfortunately, we'll have to have Gail there and pay her and listen to her legal opinion. Gail would prefer to do that behind closed doors and get this sorted out before the meeting. So, commission, I'm all ears.
Excuse me, Russ. Regina Grebilla has joined the meeting, and she has raised her hand.
Thank you. I would like an opportunity to speak, please, and thank you.
Regina, hi.
Hi.
How are you? You look great.
I don't know how this process works.
I haven't seen you in a long time, but there's a process, so you got to let us work through it, but absolutely you will be allowed to speak.
And I would really appreciate it if you could allow me that opportunity prior to taking the vote.
All right, we're not going to take a vote. I just want to listen to the commission's feelings on this. Commission, yeah, let me know what you're thinking.
Okay, I, well, I think that it should come before the commission, not be behind closed doors.
Okay.
I think, you know, even though, you know, I think there's been plenty of time for the owner, the homeowner, to sort this out and hire a lawyer in advance of this meeting. I would allow the time for them to come to the next meeting, not go right to court.
Okay.
Russ, I, I agree with that. You know, this has been going on for five months now, but yeah, I agree with Rob. I don't, I'm not in favor of this going behind closed doors either. I'd like to hear, you know, I know Neil Marcus also. I'd like to hear what he has to say, but you know, maybe give it one more shot and that's it.
Okay. Sierra?
I agree that they've had plenty of time, like Rob Horgan said, but another 30 days seems fine to allow the lawyer to review their records and what's going on in the case.
Okay, Sue?
Um, I, I, I I guess it wouldn't be the worst thing to have a lawyer come to the next meeting, but I feel like we've given so much time to this. And I just believe that there's a whole lot of tactic maneuvering that's taking place and just, you know, be a neighbor and come to the commission and try to work this out. So I'm, I'm, you know, I will agree with them with the other commission members, but I'm really almost ready to say that, you know, I'm done.
Yeah.
Wasted, you know?
Yeah, I agree. This could have been worked out months ago. It, there are, it very well said. So, so many tactics instead of just trying to understand that we're volunteers who care very much about wetlands and watercourses. We've never been dished and ghosted like we have in this town in 30 years on me being on this commission like I have. I don't think the commission could allow somebody to do what's been done and keep our heads up or even stay on the commission because if the court rules this is all good and fine, then, then I, I'm not, I don't want to waste my time on a commission. I also find it upsetting personally that a neighbor would not at least listen to what we were trying to tell her. We didn't jump right to fines. We just wanted her to admit that she did need a permit, submit the permit, pay a $350 after the fact fee. And we'd be done with this. We weren't asking for mitigation because the damage is done. And I don't know, I don't understand, but maybe Regina, who's, who's her daughter, who I've known a very long time, who's very level-headed and intelligent, I'd love to hear your, you know, what you have to say.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunities to speak at this hearing. Unfortunately, I no longer live in Roxbury, and I was just made aware of this situation. My mother raised me as a single parent while serving her community by working the night shift at Danbury Hospital for as long as I can remember. She's served this, lived in this community for the last 20 years with no issues. She escaped communism in the 1970s with only a Polish farming license as a qualification. Unfortunately, she's hard of hearing, does not speak English well, and is embarrassed by these facts. She clearly got other people to write letters to you and does not understand them. She can barely use a computer and does not know how to use or install Zoom. I don't think she even knows what Zoom is, unfortunately. But this is a requirement for her to attend today and at previous hearings, so she doesn't have access to this process on her own. My mother is a senior citizen. I've noticed a decline in her functioning over the last few years. She gets frustrated and lives on her own with no support from her community. I do not believe that she's competent to take part in this process on her own. My understanding is that this problem started in about 2015 or 2016 when the house next door, 49 Garnet, was torn down along with dozens of trees. The current next door neighbor has been dumping large amounts of tree debris onto my mother's property and diverting water onto my mother's property to make the house look like it's in Fairfield County. And in addition, the town has cleared sediment from the storm runoff that discharges onto the neighbor's property. If trees were cleared, then my understanding is that they were damaged or dead trees that were going to fall in our propane tank. I believe these factors to be the root cause of the problem and why we're here today. I'm asking you kindly today to just press the pause button on the process and allow me some time to comply with your remediation notice or perhaps involve, give my mother some time to involve her lawyer in this process. And I believe I do agree with your recommendation to hire an independent engineer to provide an independent assessment of what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Regina. The neighbors, speak to them. They had permits to do everything they've done. So that, I mean, that doesn't, you know, you can't point fingers when you're in a notice of violation mode.
I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning their permit, permits, but I would just, I would take a look at the satellite imagery over, since about 1925, since about 2015. And what you'll see is that that topography and that landscape has changed pretty dramatically. The house that's there now is much larger than the house that was there previously and was torn down.
But your mother could have solved this problem by just submitting an application with a $350 after the fact fee, and we would have accepted it and moved on.
She doesn't, unfortunately, she speaks fluent Polish and not English, and if something technical is sent to her and I'm not there and I can't, I don't see any of these things, I don't see how she would actually be able to understand what was sent to her and reply to it.
She writes very good letters, I'll tell you that much.
Somebody else wrote them.
Okay, then somebody else could have explained to her, but look, she has legal counsel now, and that's who needs to explain to her. Once, once Mr. Marcus gets up to date, I'm sure that we could work out a solution. And, and because if this goes to court, it's not going to be, it's not going to be good for anybody. Nobody wants that. But the commission has to stand up for what its mission is, and we can't be ignored. But I understand what you're saying about Zoom. And that's why I think next meeting, we should all meet in person. There's no reason not to meet in person at town hall. This is one of those instances, and I do want to talk to the commission about how we want to move forward, whether we want to stay on Zoom or whether we want to go back because COVID is, well, I don't know, people tell me COVID's over, but everybody I know is getting it. So I have three workers right now who just got COVID, so. Okay, Regina, well, commission, any comments? Like, we all agree that we should attend and that we should allow another 30 days to come to the next meeting where we could all hash this out. It shouldn't be hashed out behind closed doors. It should be hashed out at a meeting so that the commission has a say in what gets done. That's what I'm reading.
Agreed. I would just say that Regina, it's unfortunate that it took so long for you to get involved with this. And whoever was advising your mother before this, I would steer them away from this from now on. And we're also going to need to know who the contractor was, too.
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know who the contractor was just because I don't live there anymore.
Right, right. We'll find out. We're just trying to educate. The tree cutters are the worst as far as not getting permits, and we're trying to educate them. Electricians have to get permits to do the work. They do. Tree cutters are supposed to, too, but they ignore it, and we need to, we're going to step up enforcement on tree, tree contractors because they, it's got to stop what they're doing in this town.
Russ, I think this has to be
Right, of the agreement. It's, it's got to be required that we know who that was. Yeah. That'll be part of next meeting.
Russ, could I just make a clarifying comment for future reference that Zoom can be accessed via telephone as well? It doesn't have to always be accessed and that, that information is provided in the agenda.
Unfortunately, my mother would not be able to see the information that's being displayed on Zoom, which is why an in-person meeting would be more accessible.
In person is fine, but they also can set you up at the library. You can do it at the library. They can show you, you know, there's other ways of figuring out, you know, how to access technology.
But unfortunately, the, I believe the library is closed at 7:00 PM.
Right, but they can do a tutorial so you can figure it out. Zoom isn't super complicated.
Unfortunately, it's very difficult for her. Thank, thank you for the advice.
Yeah, but hey, we're, we're at another place. We'll have a personal meeting next meeting. When is that, Julie? October?
Um, let's see. It's going to be October 25th.
Okay, at 7 o'clock at town hall.
Yes.
It'd be great if all the commission members could show up. I miss all you guys, so it'd be good to all be together again.
Yeah, I'm glad you suggested that, Russ, because actually Kathy and I were talking about that, that we should be meeting again, yeah.
We'll talk about that at the end of the meeting because I do want to discuss going forward how we're going to hold meetings. I mean, the way I see it, if it's a simple meeting with simple things, we could do Zoom. But if we have complicated things, complicated applications, notice of violations, cease and desist, we should do that in person. That's, that's what I'm thinking. All right. Thank you very much, Regina. Thank you for, it's, it's going to help a lot having you, having you involved, so. All right, we'll move on to the next application.
Do we have to vote on this?
No, we're just going to move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Cease and desist is still in effect and is still on our land records, that a cease and desist is on our property. That'll remain in effect until this is resolved.
Okay.
Is Aaron on? Is Aaron on this call?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Hi, Aaron.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Aaron, we handed this over to Gail McTaggart, our town attorney, to give us guidance on what we can do or can't do. And as you saw in her email, you didn't do the public notice properly, and there's nothing the commission could do. It's in the regulation. It had to be done the way the regulation requires, and because it wasn't done that way, either you could, I'm sorry, you could pull the application meaning, take it back, or, or you could allow the commission to vote on it, but the commission is going to have no choice but to deny it because the public notice was not done correctly.
Okay, question.
It's a process, and it's a process in regulation, state regulation, that we really can't play with. So that's, yeah.
The neighbors, both neighbors were in the meeting. There's no other neighbors that are adjacent to the right way.
You could get that information at the land use department, or I could have Gail send it because she did all that work. She says there's six or seven. So she said there's no way, and the regulation doesn't allow you to say, well, they were at the meeting. They have to be noticed, no matter what.
Yes, okay. So in, in in order to give them a notice now and ask them to vote on it, what needs to be done?
Well, did you read Gail's memo?
It was signed by John Cody, not Gail. I didn't see anything from Gail.
Julie, you want to bring that up? Karen did email it to you, but maybe you didn't get it.
No, I didn't. I got a letter signed by John Cody telling me not to bother you anymore with this issue. It was written at the fifth grade level. I don't know who wrote this, but it was a shameful letter. Anyway, yeah, I don't see, I didn't see a signature from Gail.
Go to the second page. There's no signature. She did send a memo.
I didn't receive that.
Oh, John signed it. Yeah.
John Cody signed it. So I was wondering if this is a legal matter.
Well.
And Gail has to express her opinion. It should have been Gail who signed it.
Gail sent a memo to the commission. We will send that memo to you. I apologize. Our land use office is not doing things the way they need to be done. When that memo came to us, I was asked, I asked that the memo be sent to you. The memo said two things. You didn't do the public notice properly, so the commission cannot vote positive on this application. But the applicant can also withdraw the application if they choose not to have a negative vote. And you cannot submit another application until you get the access with the, uh, right-of-way owner figured out. Gail's opinion is that the land use commission should not be figuring this out. The land use commission has had two lawyers tell them two different things. And her opinion is, right now, there's a big case in Superior Court, which hasn't been voted on, on this very issue. That the issues Mr. Kava brought up really aren't apples to apples. Although there was some good cases he brought up, it's, it's not the same. And she doesn't think the Roxbury Inland Wetland Commission should make, be making the choice on whether an application could be resubmitted or not. That needs to be made by your lawyer and Mr. Dumas's lawyer, who has the right-of-way easement. Once that agreement is made that you can submit an application, then you can. But for now, it's Gail's opinion that you cannot submit an application that the commission could act on. Because we don't know the rights of Mr. Dumas, we don't know the rights of you, and we're not lawyers. So she pretty much was upset that a land use commission was put in this situation and doesn't want us to be put in this situation again.
Okay, I mean, I mean, you called the public meeting, so I figured it was, uh, it was, you know, your responsibility to determine if, if, uh, if you have a right or not have a right. Obviously, in this matter, you called the public meeting, you allowed a public meeting, which mostly discussed other things, other than, than wetlands and watercourses. It was mostly lynching me, uh, and telling everyone I'm a bad guy. Even though, all I asked was, was a little gate and I was wondering how everyone in town, including the minister and an ex, uh, selectman Barbara Henry and everyone else, felt that it was so important that they had to sign a petition. I mean, am I such a threat?
Aaron.
Yep.
Please listen to me. You are an intelligent man, but you're smart and maybe too smart. But I've been doing this a long time. You refuse to understand the process. You can understand the process, you refuse to. You're a smart enough person to read a regulation and see what the regulation requires. You're a smart enough person that that regulation required you to notice all adjoining property owners. You failed to do that because again, you do not want to understand or follow the process. Instead, you want to blame the commission, a bunch of volunteers who give a lot of time to this town. Instead of reading regulations, which you're well equipped to read, you choose to, you choose on your own to fight it and be argumentative every step of the way. A, B, our lawyer gave us advice. I agree with her advice. We shouldn't be making property right decisions. C, the public hearing was held because twenty-five people signed a petition as shown in the regulation. Again, state regulation, not town. There's no such thing as a town regulation on wetlands. There's town regulations on wetlands that are adopted from the state regulations. Why people signed it? You feel free to ask them. We don't care who signed it, other than that they live in town or they vote in town. We don't care and we have no right to ask them, why did you sign this? I think the public hearing worked, because I learned a lot at that public hearing about legal cases that I needed to know about and the commission needed to know about before we can make a fair and just decision. Because it got legal, we had to give that information to our town attorney who told us that we can't approve it, because you didn't follow the process. And that we can't accept an application where there's an argument over property owner and easement owner rights. Very simple. I mean, should I get my sixteen-year-old in the room, because they'll get it? So, so enough, 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 Aaron, Aaron, enough. We've explained it enough. Would you, would you, no, no more discussion, Aaron, or you're gonna be muted. You have this choice.
You let everyone talk, but you mute me every time I talk.
Because you're argumentative, you're argumentative and you're interrupting and you have no right to disrespect me that way.
Not interrupt.
No right. So your choice, you have two choices. Would you like to withdraw the application or would you like the commission to vote on the application?
I would like a chance to speak and then I'll decide what to do.
This is not a public hearing. You need to tell me your choice.
My concern is this, okay, and if you're not gonna mute me, let me speak. I'll try to make sense of it all, okay?
So wait a minute, because I need to go get a bottle of vodka.
I mean, you, you're.
Aaron, I don't want to hear you, because it has no effect. You just want to be argumentative. You don't want to cooperate. So, I am gonna make a motion to deny this application based on the fact that the applicant did not properly carry out, in accordance with the regulations, public notice requirements. I'm also gonna recommend that we deny this application with prejudice. Meaning, he cannot resubmit until he figures out legally what could be done. So you need your lawyer and Kevin's lawyer to talk. And when there's an agreement between the easement holder and the property owner, then you could resubmit an application. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Having heard none, all, hello Sue?
No.
Oh no, okay. Having heard none, all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed to the denial? Having heard none, the vote is five to zero? That's it. Next, next application. We move on to new business, I think, or no?
Nope, we got two more in old business.
Russ, that's not nice. That's not nice. You have to let me speak. Last time you left.
Could you please mute him? Julie?
He's muted.
Okay. And if he comes back on, throw him off the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to Paul Simansky. This is a replace existing bridge that is failing. Is Paul here?
Uh, yeah, good evening. For the record, Paul Simansky, professional engineer, uh, here, here to apply for activities before we perform them.
All right, myself and Sierra and Melanie went out, right Sierra? Or am I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I went to this one.
Paul, explain why this bridge needs to be replaced.
Yep, and so this bridge, uh, Kevin Archer believes was constructed somewhere around the order four or five decades ago. Over time, all of the structural members, uh, which are, which are metal, uh, have rusted and are, uh, close to failing. Uh, so what we did, uh, was our client retained someone engineers who are bridge engineers, uh, to propose a new bridge to replace the existing one uh, with basically a, a similar layout where there's abutments on each side of the water course and one pier, uh, within the intermittent water course. Basically mimicking what's there, just shifting it slightly, uh, from the existing spillway. That's there. We provided a detailed construction sequence demonstrating how we'll bypass the flow, uh, from the intermittent water course. So that basically this area, when it's being worked on, will be fully dry.
Any questions for the applicant? I, Sierra and I, Sierra, you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I don't either. I think it's a good plan. I could see that the, uh, concrete abutment sitting on top of bedrock is, the bedrock's kind of fractured. And I think the plan to bypass water so water doesn't flow through the work area, uh, is a good one. And I don't have any issues with it. But does anybody else on the commission have any questions?
I just, I just, out of curiosity, are the abutments being replaced? Are they being reused?
No, they're being replaced, Rob, yeah.
Is there a plan on it?
Yeah, last month we had submitted a plan from Silman and then we had a, a site development and construction sequence plan where, uh, we demonstrated how we'll bypass, provide erosion, multiple layers of erosion control on the down gradient side, just in case. Um, and other pertinent details.
According to Paul, there was a geotech boring done near one of the abutments and it showed that the rock underneath the abutment is fractured.
Correct.
Because the bridge is so old, it's just not safe. It won't be safe much longer.
So that page shows the footing details where we'll remove the fractured ledge and then pin into the solid rock.
How, how deep is the fracture?
Uh, approximately twelve to twenty-four inches.
Okay.
So the structural engineer said we need to remove that fractured ledge, because it doesn't have suitable bearing capacity.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to, uh, approve this as a maintenance activity?
No, it's a regulated activity. If they were fixing the bridge, it's maintenance. Right?
I, I, I mean, I, I mean, the alternative is to leave it there and have it fall into the stream?
No, but it, it's still, Rob, it's a, it's a regulated activity.
Okay.
It's not a maintenance activity. If you knock a house down, that's not maintaining.
Well, if it's gonna fall down and you're not.
We're talking about a hundred thirty-dollar permit.
All right.
We're, we're more than willing to pay.
Yeah, for half a million dollar.
I appreciate the thought process.
You want to try that again?
No, someone else.
We need to help with the call first, maybe for their applications.
Um, um, make a motion to, uh, uh, approve this as a regular activity.
Do I have a second?
I, I'll second, but Rob, I'm gonna watch you in case you come up with a bridge application for, uh, maintenance.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
So Paul, you're still on this one is for removal of dead trees and diseased trees, proposed supplemental trees and plantings.
Yeah, so Bill Davies is, uh, the RR birth on this site from West Chester Tree. He lives in town. And, uh, Bill has surveyed and reviewed, uh, approximately eight hundred trees on the property. Out of those trees, uh, he's, there's approximately twenty-four trees, uh, some of them primarily aff and a couple dead. And then he, he wants to maintain the vigor of the forest canopy. Th- this site's really unique. We have probably several dozen trees that are over thirty inches in galper. And Bill wants to ensure their long-term success, so he has a small handful of trees that are on the small side, very small, that he wants to remove adjacent to a couple of them. Just to allow their canopies to develop further, um, so they'd all be flush cut. The couple dead trees that are within the wetlands would be done when the ground's frozen in the winter months. Uh, in return, we're proposing the planting of, uh, forty-three trees, three hundred perennials and five hundred fifty ferns.
I did go and look at it. My concern about the plan is we're changing woods into Fairfield County. I hate to say it. Um, is that what's going on here? Is we're gonna cut down a bunch of trees and make it a big, nice Central Park kind of look?
No, I mean, if, if Julie could pull up the plan, I, I can show you there. It's really a minimal number. And we field located all the trees that we're preserving adjacent to it. So if you're able to zoom in on it, any part of the plan there.
I also have it broken down in other areas, if you want.
Yeah, so, so like, oh, if you go back one. So in this area, for instance, you can see, oh, uh, yeah, that, that's a good example. Th- this is typical. Um, so in this area, there's only three trees in yellow. And it's surrounded by about fifty trees approximately. So, so Bill's really targeted the tree removal to ensure the health of the other trees that are there.
Okay, and the plantings are all along the driveway?
Correct, yeah.
So the yellow trees, the removal.
We're not clear cutting a woods and making it into something that.
Oh, no, no, we're, we're removing less than five percent of the trees. It, it's really just, uh, to, to allow some expansion of the existing mature trees. And half of them are, are already dead. And the concern is just them falling on the driveway. Part, part of this plan, the main part of this plan is to re-vegetate along the driveway, because where we remove trees, our client wants to construct new tree, plant new trees along the driveway itself. So that that has a canopy over, as well over time.
Hey Paul, are the saplings gonna be removed also?
No, no.
He had them survey all those trees?
We've, we field located over eight hundred trees on site. Um, we've, we've, uh, West Chester Tree has provided the caliper condition, help and recommendations for each of the trees. They're now developing a plan to, uh, prune, feed and maintain approximately three to four hundred of them. Wow. So, so this, um, our client is extremely, uh, he's a tree lover. Yeah, he's a tree lover.
This is the one we walked, I think, Russ.
Yep, yep.
Oh, he cataloged all the trees.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions by the commission? I'll look for a motion.
Oh, I, Russ, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I, I understand where you want to, would want to get rid of diseased trees and I understand opening up areas to allow, um, more mature trees to, um, to, you know, to grow and expand. But I do, and I, you know, we've had some applications before us where they want to get rid of the dead trees, um, because of, you know, falling on the driveway and it just harkens back to the value that, you know, dead trees have too in the forest and oscillate into an ecosystem, even a wetlands, because you have a lot of amphibians and different, um, you know, that will use that. So that's my only comment to make.
It's a great point, Sue. Does it, you have the applications, Russ, where we've required snags to be left? For the wildlife?
That's right. Usually they're in swamps.
So, so if you guys look, uh, there's an overall plan, Sue, so there's areas outside of the area of the driveway, um, that we have not cataloged, particularly in the lower left-hand side. So, so if you look, there's a bunch of dead trees in the lower portion of this map where we haven't field located either dead or alive trees. Um, there's probably four or five hundred trees in that area and those are all to remain. So we're cognizant of, of that concern.
So, actually, so going back, Russ, you and Sierra walked this. You walked and saw all the trees that were marked that they were gonna be taking down. I'm just curious, because I guess.
Were being, for me, I just saw all the trees, how they were cataloged and there was like a nutrition plan for those particular trees.
I did. I walked and I.
You saw, yeah, I think you went later. There was like another time you went, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause when you're looking, I, I think this is when it comes into where you're talking.
Sue, maybe, maybe you should walk it.
About meeting in person, because sometimes I look at a plan like this and that if, unless you've walked it, it kind of almost looks like what is the scope of the project? Maybe, maybe it's within reason. I just, that's all, I guess, just the input from Sierra, you know, but I just do know that I. I just do know that I, for the past year, year and a half, we've had some applications where you know, as far as, well, we wanna get rid of the trees because it's a hazard for the driveway and and I just think we need to, um, not saying that, you know, not permit it, but just a little caution there, that's all.
Well, we, you could walk it, Sue, you know, and I'd be glad to walk it with you again. Or me, I'll go again, cause everything's flagged and you could see. You know, what it is. What's not flagged is all the landscaping, but, uh, we're not the landscape commission. I, I do have concerns about people moving here and making this place into Fairfield County, because Fairfield County is not natural. It's become unnatural. It's a park, one big park. And it really affects the ecosystem. And although our jurisdiction is only the wetlands, areas outside the wetlands are affected by, um, you know, can affect wetlands ecosystems as you, as you just, so, as you said, you know? So, I, we don't have to approve this tonight. It could wait a month and if you feel more comfortable going to look, I think I'd feel more comfortable going to look again after what you said.
And maybe we can coordinate and get Bill out there so he can show you each tree and why he targeted each specific one for removal.
Yeah, and I agree, um, Sue, you should, um, go walk it. But, um, like for this, like I totally get what you're saying, but for this particular, it just seemed like, um, the builder owner, um, actually cared about the trees and he had like a plan for each one. So I felt that he was, you know, kind of careful and meticulous about it, but, um, that does my personal opinion.
No, I, I agree. I mean, it was pretty impressive, the amount of money he spent.
Yeah, he spent all this. Studying trees, trees, and you see other people, you know, even in this call who are the opposite. But yeah, you should definitely agree with you on this, seeing it on paper and walking it.
Yeah, Sue, so do you wanna walk it? Cause then next meeting we'll be together in person and you could look at the plants too.
Well, I have a problem. I'm not gonna be able to make next meeting, so. So, um, you know, you know, I'm not, and I'm not trying to take away from the intent of this person or what their objective is on their property. I'm just throwing caution to the wind, um, and not having been on the property. And like I said, you know, when you look at it on a computer screen with the plan, um, it's kind of hard to, you know, to judge the scope of the project. That's all I'm saying. So, I mean, I could walk it and I could, you know, um, submit, you know, my opinion, but I don't know if, I, I just won't be able to make the next meeting.
You couldn't do that. It's up to you. Let me get my cat's butt out of the way.
Hey, Paul, how many acres is this parcel?
Uh, I wanna say, so like, two, two, twenty, twenty-five acres, something like that.
Okay, and it looks like maybe the cataloged area is about half of it.
Less than half, yeah.
Okay, so maybe twelve to fifteen acres. Ten, twelve acres, whatever.
Yeah, and we're proposing for, I think it's forty-seven trees total to be removed within the twelve acres.
Well, I, I mean, I'm gonna be at next month's meeting. I can walk it with you, Russ.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'd like to go look at it again.
So I'll coordinate it. I'll coordinate with Bill Davies, with you guys, so you guys can meet him out there, cause he's the tree guru.
Yeah, like, like Sue, if you wanna come and Sierra wants to come, we could just have a, a special meeting.
Yeah, I'd love to walk it again.
We can have a special meeting. It, it's not a problem to have a special meeting. It's just some sidewalks that are contentious, then the public can come and we tend to stare away from that. But here, there's not gonna be anybody who cares. Um, so Paul, you and I will coordinate and I'll coordinate with Sarah, Sue, Rob, John, if you wanna come. Um, we could have a little picnic.
I was just gonna say, miss bringing the wine.
Say, I'll bring a beer.
All right, and, uh, we'll go have a good time. That's all.
All right. Thanks for your time, guys. Have a great evening.
Oh, Paul, one last thing. There's serious erosion problems at the bottom of that driveway. And during a storm, silt came out into the road and it went down. And I know John Cody talked to somebody about it, that this needs to be fixed. And I think you did go out. And I did notice that they, they've buffered up their erosion control. But I need you to look at that, uh, where it meets the road, cause obviously if, if the plan's not working, now's the time to change.
Yeah, so, so just so everyone's aware, that was the day of the, we had eight, approximately eight inches in twenty-four hours. Um, so since then.
Where was I?
That was like.
Come on, eight inches, I'd be floating.
So, just, just so you guys know, it was eight and a quarter inches at my house in New Melford. Eight and a half inches on West Street at my house and eight and a quarter inches at two thirty Baker Road.
Yeah, but it, it was.
Your rain gauge.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was four point three at my house.
Yeah, I was four, I was four something at my house, but maybe, maybe it was over your head, Paul.
Yeah, so I can just tell you what all my free, free rain gauge is I monitor on. Um, so we did.
Look at it and, and.
Yeah, so we had quite a few erosion controls prior to that storm event and we've added even additional. So when we're on site, we can show you guys what we've done since then and with the smaller rain events that we've had. Um, we've had no issues at all, but we're, I'm there on a weekly basis now, monitoring things. And I'll be there again tomorrow.
Thanks.
Hey, hey.
All right, have a great.
Paul, just know that in the future, you gotta plan for an eight-inch rainfall then, in twenty-four hours.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's crazy.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, guys. Have a great evening.
Take care.
Thank you.
Now we move on to new business.
New business. Um, Lakesley Carriage Lane.
Is this new?
It is new.
Did it just come in today?
Nope, it was in last week.
Okay.
Me and my wife are on the call here, guys, just so that you're aware.
So what is it for, Julie? Go back to the application.
Um, it's for a single-family dwelling. Um, um, on Carriage Lane.
Okay.
Lot sixty. And.
Where's that? Where's lot sixty? I didn't think there was much left there. I thought Booth bought it all.
It'd be on the other side of the road. Or maybe not.
Well, I guess he missed a spot.
Oh, I see it, yeah. Yeah, no, he bought on all the land on the other side. This site is on the downhill side. If I'm not mistaken, near the end of the cul-de-sac. And there are wetlands down there. I I do see them.
It's, it's not all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac, Russ. It's about halfway to the cul-de-sac.
Right, right. But it's on the downhill side, right?
Right, there's a big wetland that goes in on that, below the house site. It goes through there.
Who, who's on the call for this?
Uh, this is the owner, uh, Nick Blakesley and, uh, my wife, Rachel.
Hi, Nick and Rachel. Are you new to town?
Yes, we are.
Well, welcome to Roxbury. You, you landed in a great place.
Appreciate it.
Unless you saw the first part of this. Yeah, the first step here is we accept the application and we'll come out and, um, take a look. We'll, we'll just walk it. You know, just so we could get our bearings.
Yep.
Are, are you over a hundred feet from the wetland? Do you know, Nick?
Yeah, it's way down bottom. We're, we're up top. Yeah, you can tell where it drops down about sixty-foot bank bit and then it's wetlands way down, so.
Do you know if the roof drainage is going to the ground or just out? Out, is it going to, uh, I think I seen infiltrated.
I, to be honest, yeah, I'm, I'm in a car right now. I, I think if you zoom in, it may have the, the trains on the backside. The RD marks there.
Yeah, that's a leach field right there.
Yeah, the lower portion bo- behind the house.
The house, yeah. We, we do, we do require that roof trains go to, into infiltrator systems. That's a system, it's just a perforated pipe. We, we don't allow, regardless of distance to wetlands, cause we're trying to control runoff. Um, we don't allow roof trains to just go to daylight, so to speak. They have to be, the water has to be infiltrated. So you might tell the engineer that. And, or he could call me, cause I know him. And he should know it. He should know it. I, I don't know, maybe he forgot.
Yeah, so we'll have four-inch perforated PVC that they tie into underground. And I'm assuming there'll be some sort of drainage underneath that.
It could, it could be a detention type basin. Bio-detention, doesn't have to be an infiltrator.
Yeah, but I don't see anything on this plan telling.
No, I don't, I don't either.
Yeah, unless there's another plan.
Uh, I see something in the corner there. It says install energy dissipator. I don't know if that has to do with, I see RD coming behind the house there and it runs to, uh, energy dissipator. I don't know if there's a detail there.
That's like a splash pad type of thing to, to slow the velocity of the.
Okay, I didn't know.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a detention device.
Yeah, he, he needs to, he needs to do, um, infiltrators or detention of some kind for roof drainage. On both the garage and the house.
Okay, so I could talk to Charlie about that or have him give you a call, like you said.
Yeah, not a problem. Okay, welcome to town, uh, to town again, Nick and Rachel. You will love it. I hope you have kids. The more kids, the better.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, what's next?
Uh, so can you continue till next month? Are you gonna go take a look at it?
We are.
Okay.
I, I can go look, Russ.
Okay, Rob.
Um, is it, is, are things staked out? Did we lose the owner?
Uh, no, we're still here. Um, nothing staked out yet. They did do, um, I had called before you dig out there and they did drop a, uh, a benchmark. And the perimeter is marked out, but nothing for the house or the, uh, the septic or anything like that yet.
Tell him he just needs to stake it. He'll know what it means. Four posts where the house is, four where the garage is and one post where the, uh, leach field is. That way we'll, we'll have our bearings.
Okay, so I'll, it'll probably be later this week, early next week, and then I can, uh, you want me to have him give you a call and tell you when it's all ready or? You guys just.
Yeah, when he calls, uh, land use, they'll, they'll tell me and then we'll go out.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Nick.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, we, next, we're on two hundred South Berry Road, um, for a promise, pond dredging and maintenance.
Evening.
Hi, Herb.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, Herb. How are you? So you need to clean.
We're dry, ain't it?
Yeah, you need to look that out.
Yep, yes, sir.
Where are you gonna bring the dirt?
The dirt we marked up on a map that I gave to Mr. Cody. Uh, let's see, can we go up further? It is, keep going up a little further. Uh, let's see here. It's gonna go.
Yeah, I see it.
Right, and we marked it, penciled it in. And then we're gonna fence, silt fence it and then fi- silt fence, uh, near the stream. In other words, um, twice barricaded, okay?
Yeah. And you're not gonna do this before a heavy rainfall or when the stream's running good, right?
I hope not.
Is that, is that pond silt just a stockpile to de-water it?
Please say again.
Spread it out.
Is that, that circle?
We'd like to let it settle. We, we would really prefer to let it all settled out. And then next spring, go to it.
Okay, and you're gonna spread it in that whole area?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
In that whole area.
Okay. Any questions for her? Does the commission see this as a maintenance activity? Where the fee is waived?
Yes, I do.
But would I make that motion?
Yeah, but, but I also just think that maybe John Cody should just go out and see the silt fence up.
Before. Oh, I'd like him to be there, uh, almost sure. He's just my neighbor right up the street.
Yeah, just make that motion, Rob. Make it as a condition.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this as a maintenance activity with the condition that, uh, the Wetlands Enforcement Officer is notified, uh, when the silt fence is installed to come out and take a look.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sue made the second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, Herb, you're good to go. Call Mr. Cody when your silt fence and erosion control is up.
Thank you, gentlemen, and have a good evening.
And ladies.
And ladies, and ladies. What's next, Sue, for Herb gets himself in trouble?
Okay, we've got another one, um. We're looking at eighteen Brandywine Crossing and Kyle and Bree's on for the owners.
And Emily Jones, uh, from Civil One Professional Engineer with Civil One Engineering in Woodbury is also.
I read all about you, Emily. It's nice to meet you.
Oh, no. Okay, I know, I think this is the first time I've been in front of this commission, so uh, it was an eventful night and exciting first.
Every, every meeting's eventful for some reason. I think it has to do with me, but I'm not sure.
Um, Kyle, you want me to go ahead and introduce the project?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, all right, so, um, we are here for, um, single-family residence at eighteen Brandywine Crossing. Brandywine Crossing is a small cul-de-sac located off the south side of Booth Road, um, between Gold Mine and, uh, like Dorothy Beable Road, sort of near Topland Farm, so. Um, he's got a seven point eight, seven point four acre piece. It's currently vacant and it was approved as part of a six-lot subdivision in nineteen eighty-four, but it was never built up. Um, so we have prepared a, an updated A-two survey for the site, not going off of the old survey. And we also, um, had the wetlands reflagged recently by, uh, Ian Cole Soil Scientist so that we had an updated existing conditions map, uh, to submit to the, uh, to the commission. There are wetlands located near the entrance. You can see the lot, um, has sort of a narrow access off of the roadway and then widens out, um, into the remainder of the lot. So the wetlands are located, um, near the beginning of the, um, existing driveway. There's actually an existing gravel drive that goes into, into the parcel. Um, and the proposal is to use that existing drive to access the remainder of the lot to construct a single-family residence. Uh, on the next sheet, I think it should be C one point one shows the site plan. Yeah, um, the overall site plan, if you wanted to zoom out a little bit. Our big pieces of paper for a screen. Perfect. Um, so coming in off Brandywine Crossing, about the first two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy feet um, is on the existing gravel drive and then like to extend that driveway um, up to the house. There's a high point at about station three fifty. So only a small portion of the driveway actually drains back towards, um, Brandywine and it's very flat in that area. It's already constructed. Um, it's gravel and then the steepest portion of the driveway is closer to the house, um, but it really follows existing rates. Not a lot of cut and fill. Um, about two percent at the beginning and then a short section that's eight percent but draining, you know, towards the back. Um, so it can remain gravel and that's the proposal. And what they'd really like to do, um, is to put, to resurface the beginning of this driveway um, with three inches of new process gravel to, uh, sort of bring it up to snuff because it hasn't been, um, done in a while to access uh, the back of the site. We also did soil testing on the site, so we have a pump-up system. You can see it's in blue on the plan, um, located in the north side of the property. Uh, that is, uh, currently being reviewed by the Health Department. Very well-drained soils on the property. The, um, roof leader drains are going to an infiltration system as required and there's no basement actually because, um, It's, uh, a little bit rocky, so it's slab on grade, but, uh, the remaining, um, portion of the driveway will, um. Sheet flow off and the, uh, soils are really well drained up there, so we expect a high level of groundwater recharge and infiltration. So the only regulated activity really is for some resurfacing of that, of that driveway, um, coming in.
Why's the leach field so far away?
Um, just because that was where the best soil testing holes ended up. I think they poked a number of holes on the site.
Okay.
So, so the wetlands, uh, there are no wetlands on the, in this rectangle?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, the only.
You can see some at the beginning, which is obviously where the regulated activity is, the beginning of driveway, and then there are some that are just along that eastern property line. Um, in the back as well, but nothing really drains towards that area.
Okay, is that, I, I'm having a hard time reading this. Those are the wetland flags up top, that green?
Yeah. The green is the property line.
Okay, but.
Um, and then there's little, almost like, see the text, and there's little triangles that represent the wetland flag. But there are some high points, um, between the house and that, and that wetland area.
And then where are the wetlands at the entry?
So right at the entry. Yep.
And is that, is that, does that cross go under the driveway, the wetlands, or they, they're just on the east side?
They're on the, yeah, that sort of, they're on the east side, northeast side of the driveway, about six feet away. But it's existing there now. They're not widening it or anything like that. They just wanna, um, you know, put the gravel back down that's worn off.
And that, that stone wall at the entrance does truly end where it shows on the map? It doesn't continue past?
And, and that will remain, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Really flat in that area, about less than two percent, like one to two.
I also'd like to add that it's not gonna be a traditional house. It's gonna be a pole barn. So there will be minimal disturbance to the area. There won't be a traditional foundation.
Kyle, you planning on working, living with cows? Is that what it is?
No, it's gonna be a barn dominium.
Oh, cool, cool. Anybody have any questions? Do we really need to hold this up to go look at it? Because it sounds to me like, other than the beginning. Uh, which is already built. Does anybody wanna go look at this? Are you comfortable approving it? Uh, because it's pretty much non-regulated? Anybody? I know, I know we don't like that it's just approved houses, but this is flat and seems like a pretty cut and dry application. Nobody wants to go take a walk through the woods?
I mean, I can go look at it.
All right. You got a lot to do next month, Rob.
I know. You guys, you have to start paying me. Um, is that, is that anything marked out?
Um, it's not staked right now, except for the, you know, the soil test location, but we can put some stakes along the center line. Of the driveway. Do you wanna hike all the way up to the? To the house?
Yeah, just put a couple stakes where the house is gonna be.
Okay, and you wanna take the leaching field?
Well, I would imagine that's, there's some deep, there's some flaggings or something up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be elaborate. But Rob and I have gotten lost before.
Listen, I'm here and I've gotten lost before.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Nice to meet you.
It was nice to meet you too, also. Thank you.
Yep, have a good, good night.
Thank you.
What's next, Julie?
Um, next is nine Dutch Bridge Road for tree planting. It's an old application. Let me. Yeah, let me just resize it.
And the applicant is?
Jim and Cog are here.
Hey, Jim, how are you?
Great, good to see everyone again. Thank you. Jeremy is out west doing his wildfire training that he does every year, so, um, I'll answer any questions.
That sounds like fun.
Yes.
So what are you doing? Just planting a couple trees?
Yes, so if you all recall, we had that sort of open area in the back, uh, facing a neighbor's property. We just wanted to, um, make it a little bit more private there. So, um. We asked Jeremy to come up with a plan for some naturally occurring trees. We don't want it to look landscaped at all. Uh, we, we like the sort of natural tree line that we have, so we wanna preserve that. And so we've asked him to put in some relatively mature trees, so that it'll look natural. And, um, again, it's in the tree line, so we don't wanna really draw our attention to it. We just wanna create privacy.
How many trees?
Uh, don't recall what he, I think he put in the application, uh, sticks. Eight to ten foot Douglas firs. I'm just reading on the other screen here, three to four hemlocks.
Okay.
Now, you, you guys have it? Okay.
Yeah.
Denise is here too. She's on crutches. Okay.
So th- this isn't in a wet, wetlands or anything?
It is not.
We're.
No, it's, um, it's in a lawn, right, Jim?
That's right.
Yeah, when I was there. And your wife had COVID, I think, at the time.
That's right.
And now a broken foot.
Oh, great. He's just having fun in Roxbury. Yeah, I don't, I, I went out there with John. I don't have a problem with this. I don't really think it needed an application. I just felt it was safer that way, given the neighbors had some concerns because of their organic farming. It'd be better to just, uh, just do it this way. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any problem with this. Neither do I.
Somebody wanna approve it as a non-regulated activity?
I'll move to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
Do I have a second? So you're a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good luck, Jim.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye. Next.
Okay, you have the choice of going to the Wetlands Enforcement Report, Officers Report, or adding an application. For a pond restoration for ninety-one Squire Road.
Ninety-one? Yeah, well, we could do the application. I'll make a motion to vote on the agenda. Ninety-one Squire Road for a pond cleaning. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second, because it's not, it came in after. We put together the other agenda, so let me close this out and put up the new one. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay.
On, oh, okay, this is one where the dam broke. The dam broke. And he just wants to fix it, and I'm assuming it's a rock dam. But I, I think Rob should go out and look and make sure. Am I right, Julie? Didn't he write that the? That he just wants to put the rocks back? Yeah, originally had a pond. It sprang a leak, and I'm requesting to close the leak and restore the pond. But my question is, how's he gonna restore the leak? You know, you say, okay, restore it, and then you got ten.
Mark, Mark is on with us.
Oh, Mark, you on?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mr. Duran.
How are you gonna restore the leak?
Um, there's a hole probably about three feet round.
How did that happen?
Um. I don't know, over time. And it's been about eight years since I've had, um, a pond that held water. Because of this hole, and embarrassingly, um, I just haven't had the funds to do anything with it. By myself, and, uh, now I do have the funds and I wanna start doing these, um, projects that I've. Had earmarked for, uh, years now, and, um.
You mustn't be in the stock market. You wouldn't have the funds, that's for sure. So, Mark, how are you gonna fill this hole?
Um. That's not my area of expertise. I've talked to Sparky about it, and he wanted me to come here and, um. Just let you know about the hole. It was an existing pond. We used to skate on it up until probably about, like I said, fourteen or fifteen. And, um.
All right, we'll, we'll come look at it, but in the meantime, he has to give us a plan. Like, how's he gonna do this? We can't, we, we can't just approve it on, you know, okay, I got a hole. I don't know how I'm gonna fill it, you know what I mean? But I'll figure something out. We, we need a plan. It doesn't need to be elaborate.
Is this, how tall is this dam?
Well.
On the, on the, on the low side, on the low side, on the stream side?
Um, it's probably about three feet or so. It's not a cement or, or a rock dam. It seems like it's just. Filled in to hold water.
North and berm, yeah, north and berm.
Yeah, I don't.
All right, we gotta kinda look at it, but I'm sure Sparky knows how to fix it, so he needs to give. A plan. It doesn't need to be elaborate, I don't think, unless somebody on the commission feels different. Sounds like a pretty cut and dry.
The only, the only thing I would be worried about, Russ, if it wasn't, uh, you know, if it washed out. But, huh, you know, if it wasn't done or correctly or whatever, and it washed out, went into Jack's Brook. You know, because you're gonna be replacing, not just sticking rocks in there. It's gonna be like.
Gotta look at it.
It's gonna be an urban dam.
Yeah, we gotta look at it though, Rob. I mean, otherwise we're just guessing.
The pond would eventually drain into Jack's Brook when it was holding water.
All right, we'll come out and look at it, Mark.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I be there with you, or?
Oh, yeah, it's your property. You don't have to be. But, yeah, sure, well, um. This Karen, yeah, we have the application with your number on it, so we could get ahold of you.
Actually, should I reach out to Sparky to have him start coming up with his?
Yeah, call him tonight and say, Sparky, I need a plan. How are you gonna do this? Okay? He probably wanted you to come to us first to see if we'd even entertain the idea.
That's what he did, yes.
Yeah, of course we would. I mean, that's what we're here for.
And, and especially at the beginning of the meeting, uh, this was quite entertaining.
Yeah, people are starting to tune in from all over the country.
They start binge watching our, our meetings now.
I, I felt like I should be paying for some of this. I guess through my application fee, I will be.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thanks, Mark. I'll be in touch.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you very much to you and the commission. Thank you.
All right. So we have a. There we go.
The last item.
This is the. Wetland Enforcement Officer Report. Right now he's fishing salmon in New York somewhere. Looks like simple stuff. Anybody have any questions?
No, good.
All right, what's next on the agenda? Doesn't she, I keep asking to put Chairman's report on there, and I.
Well, there is a Chairman's report.
Oh, good, good.
Would you like to give one?
Of course.
Okay.
So what do we wanna do at our meetings? Do we wanna start attending, um, in, in person? Do we wanna keep it flexible where if there's not much going on, that we keep, we could do Zoom? So we don't drive all the way to Town Hall for a twenty minute meeting?
I'm a big fan of Zoom meetings.
I like it.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to meet in person. Um, you know, we have new commission members that really, except for. On my computer here, I haven't met.
Right, right.
But, but with that, that's.
Let's, let's meet now and then when we have to.
Okay. I was gonna say, Russ, can we do a hybrid too?
Well, the hybrids all set up, right, Julie?
Is, um, the last Board of Finance meeting, um, about half of the members, um. Came, met there in person, and then two of them zoomed in. And it's great. You can even zoom in when you're away, so.
Yeah, okay, so you have the option of not coming, but next meeting, I think we all should be there.
Yeah, Russ, I'm gonna have a, probably have a problem. I'm getting a, uh, hip replaced on the nineteenth.
Holy cow, John, well, who are you, Frankenstein?
I'm adding to my collection of orthopedic implants.
All right, so Sue won't be there, you won't be there, but Sierra, are you gonna be there?
Yeah, unless I get a better offer.
Yeah, that shouldn't take much.
Rob, obviously you're gonna be there.
Why do you say obvious? Why do you say obviously?
Because you're doing twenty-five site visits.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you gonna do them all and not show up?
Maybe.
Kathy, you gonna be there?
I can be there, and Rob, if you wanna, um, somebody else to go on any of these site visits, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, all right, good. Just gonna say that, uh, for the next meeting, if we can do a hybrid, I can probably call in.
All right, you could do a hybrid anytime.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think with the attorneys there, it will be easier to, to be in person, but if you can't. It's, then call in.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
I just have one thing I wanted to bring up, Russ.
Okay.
Um, oh, 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 um, the, uh. Applications that come in, like the day of the meetings. And things, you know, most towns that I deal with, there's like a week that you have to have your applications in, and that. We used to be that way, and wh- why, why don't we have a? I mean, applications.
Well, you've voted. You just voted for it.
I, no, I know.
He can say no, uh, no.
No, but if they know when they apply, that no, you, you've missed the deadline. I don't care if it's like two or three days, at least it gives Julie and, and gives everyone a little bit of time.
I believe, and I'll check into this, I believe the regulation allows. Submitter of an application up to the day of a meeting. But because all the towns complained that how are their land use offices gonna get that stuff on an agenda? The response back was, well, then you could vote it on the agenda at the meeting. But they have up to the day of the meeting to get the application in. It used to be three days before the meeting. So I think a lot of commissions are absolutely doing what you're saying, Rob. Some of them.
Well, I know they are. I know they are.
And I, I personally, I don't think the regulation allows that, but nobody, nobody screams about it. But I'll check, I'll look at our regulations and figure it out.
I just think it's unfair to the, the staff. When it comes in so late.
Well, if, if that was happening a lot, I could, yeah, but it, it's today. Tonight was the first time in a long time, no?
I don't know, it happens, it happens quite often. I, you know, it happens at least every other meeting. Someone's coming in with a late application.
All right, let me look at the reg, and if the reg says we could set a date, then we'll tell Karen, don't accept them after this date.
I don't think three days is unreasonable for people.
No. No.
I agree.
I have a question on, uh, on that vein too, not as far as an application. But do we have anything as far as people submitting, um, letters and, and, and other paperwork? Can they do that right up to the meeting too? You know, that I don't know, Russ. I've never known that.
Well.
Because sometimes, no, it's hard to re, sometimes things get loaded in that day and it's hard to review it too.
Right. Say the woods came in today, we would not vote to put it on the agenda. It would be that simple. But.
But sometimes like.
To fill in a hole, you know? So.
No, but more what I'm saying, asking Russ is like, you know, sometimes we get attorney letters or different things that get submitted in. Is there a timeframe for that, or they can do that right up prior to the meeting? I've never known.
I, I need to look at the regulation. It's been a long time since I've looked at that, and I know they changed it.
Okay. I mean, right now, it hasn't been a big deal, but if we ever went through an application again, like, let's say, again, like the woods. Sometimes things would be submitted and you're scrambling before the meeting, trying to read what was added in.
Right. Right. Right, and there are a lot of new houses, it seems, coming into town, so you're right, we should set a policy and just stick to it. Let me see what the reg allows. Or we could do what other towns, they wanna just do our own policy and act with it. Or change our regulation. But it's the state that did this, cause the developers were complaining. And I think they have up to the day of the meeting, but let me see. Anything else?
Uh, Russ-
Yes.
Oh, I, I just wanted to make a quick comment that um, I was able to attend the um, education session. Put on um, up in, I think it's um, Bristol with um, you know, sponsored by DEP. Um, it was like a full day session on, you know, with a presentation by a soil scientist and then another with um, forestry. And it was really, really outstanding. They did a really terrific job and um, you know, I, I um, highly recommend it. Uh, I think they offer it every couple of years, um, if anyone has an opportunity in the future.
Great Kathy, thanks. What was it about? Legal, legal issues and?
No, 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 it was just um, assessment. It was um, a whole presentation with the soil scientist, sort of what you're looking for and-
Right, 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 and what, what they do and how they determine what they do, yeah.
And then the afternoon was um, um, forestry and really when they're um, going in and um, clear cutting and they had, like, they actually took us out into this forest and had clear cutted a whole section. That passed a intermittent waterway and um, different ways to get the equipment over in consideration, so um, they really did a terrific job um. Um, with the forest examples as well.
Okay, great, thanks for doing that.
Did they ever commit to do that Kathy?
They don't need it, it's just hire a lawyer. Alright, somebody wanna make an uh, motion to adjourn?
Go moved.
Second? Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you everybody, have a good month, we'll see you, we'll see you in person, bye.
Take care.